It is six o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is now in session. I would like to ask you to stand for the invocation, Councilman Roman Garcia and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. And today for the invocation, I've actually invited Pastor David Danielson. He's from Impact Christian Fellowship. So you're more than welcome to start us out with the prayer. Thank you for being here.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for Kerrville. We could be any place, anywhere in the world right now, but you've chosen for us to be right here, and we thank you for that. Thank you for your smile and your blessing on our community. Thank you that we're a city of refuge and a place of healing and restoration. We have a heritage of that, and we ask that you continue to allow us to build upon that and the inheritance that comes with that. We thank you for the hearts of so many who serve in our community in so many ways and so well, and we pray you'd bless and refresh all the educators this summer during the break and renew and strengthen those who provide medical care and hospice ministry in this difficult season that we're working through. And specifically tonight, I thank you for those who've raised up to serve on our city council, give them the wisdom, revelation, and understanding they need to make the decisions that'll be in front of them, open up new insights and new solutions to any problem that just stuck out there. And I thank you, Lord, that you'll multiply back to them the time they spend serving our city. We ask you to bless all our businesses in the community to grow and increase and prosper, bring them the excellent workforce they need to succeed. Continue to grow a spirit of unity among the Christian churches in town and the ministries because when your brothers and sisters dwell together in unity, you command a blessing there. And guard and protect our first responders and their families. May be noised abroad in the heaven and on the earth that God is up to something beautiful in Kerrville, Texas. And for that, we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor David. If you'll please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to make a brief comment. David Danielson from Impact Fellowship, and all the time he's been here has been very good to pray for other churches and to pray for our businesses and blessings on those businesses. Thank you. Announcement of community interest. Mr. Cunys?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to everybody tonight. I hope everybody had a great week. Got a little rain this morning. Columbus got a lot of rain, so we're thankful for that. And I forgot, I have to put my glasses on because I can't see. All right. Kerrville Library continues to offer a number of activities as summer officially begins, as it began yesterday. Tomorrow, the library will present NAD Science at the Calo at 10:00 a.m., followed by Adult Craft Time at 3:00 p.m., and that's back in the library room. On Thursday, the Lego Club meets at 10:30 at the library, followed by the Talking Texas Book Club at 11:30 at the Kerr Regional History Center. I don't know how many of y'all have been in that building, but it's absolutely beautiful, so that'd be a good chance to check it out. And in the afternoon, a family movie, Scoob, at 2:00 p.m. There in the library's downstairs meeting room. I'm assuming that has something to do with Scooby Doo, one of my childhood heroes. Next week, we have Kids Craft on Monday at 10:30, and then Teens and Tweens Craft follows Tuesday at 2:00 p.m. Both of those are in the library, so lots going on over there. Parks activities. For the second time this year, the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting Park and Lunch. It's a special drive-in movie experience in Kerrville Shonard Park on Mandera Highway. I think the first one was about two months ago. It's terrific. It had a good turnout, and I expect we'll have an even better one this time. That'll be Friday, June 25th. The movie begins at 9:00 p.m. or dark, and it's Disney's live-action film, Aladdin. It's PG. It will be screened through the drive-in movie style, and you can play the sound through your car stereo, car radio. Refreshments will be available for purchase, and you can pick us in advance online or by calling the Parks and Recreation Department. You'll look up there. That screen is huge. You can see it very easily. I'm trying to talk my wife into letting me put that in my den for football. So far, I haven't had any luck. And several things coming up with the Olympic pools. First of all, first one is Family Swim Night, and that's this Saturday, June 26. It'll be from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. There's a $2 admission fee, but that also includes a hot dog, chips, and drink while they last, so get out there early and get a dinner with that. And this one's not up there, but we'll certainly advertise it on our Facebook page and in the days to come. Next Friday, July 2nd, there will be a dive-in movie at the pool with free admission. That begins at 8:30, and it's followed by the movie Shark Tale at 9:00 or dark. And then finally, July 4th, this Independence Day celebration. It'll be the Olympic Pool Promotional Day, and there's a daily admission fee of $1, which applies every day, but on that day, each guest will have the opportunity to receive ice cream free between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m., again, whilst both of them. So a lot going on, and I'd love to look forward to it.
Do you have any other announcements of community interest? All right. If not, I would like to ask the folks involved in the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation, please come here and pro the dais.
Good news.
We'll do, yeah, we'll double up here. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to read this proclamation and recognition, and then I'm going to ask Lieutenant Colonel Eichner to do some explaining for us about what this is about. City of Kerrville recognizes Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation with a June 22, 2021 Kerrville Kindness Award. The Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation recently completed a $100,000 fundraising drive to install electrical infrastructure on Tranquility Island, which will allow the island to be illuminated for the Christmas holiday season and during other special events throughout the year. By hitting the $100,000 goal, KCLC also raised enough funds to qualify for a matching grant from the Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation to apply to the project. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to the KCLC for its commitment to serving this unique need in the community, and this is signed by the city council. If you'd like to applaud, you may. Okay. Colonel Eichner, tell us about this.
It was a team effort, first of all. This is part of the team up here. We, our first deposit was on the 5th of May, and on the 17th of June, which was 42 days later, we had $100,000. And that's because of the generosity of people. Richard Ferris here is one of our stars, and we thank him for being a seat necklace donor. We got the Greens and Kirk County Abstract, Berna Banna. And one I'd like to point out is Stockton Williams, this tall bald guy in the back. He was the first private donor to the campaign, and I really thank him for his trust and his confidence in us, but thank you, Stockton. Appreciate that.
One of 138 now.
We had a total of 192 donors, three grants, 51 businesses, and 138 private donors. And the biggest grant came from the...
Community Foundation.
Raise your hand. Director of the Community Foundation.
That put us over the top. If it hadn't have been for you, we wouldn't have been there. But we've got members of the board, contributors. I mean, it was a great experience, and it was really positive. And we look forward to Christmas on the 20th of November.
And Mayor, we've got, I know we have a member of EIC here doing...
Yeah, we've got a member of EIC, Danny Almond over here.
Yeah, I was hoping if Danny would have a check for $100,000, he could send it to the...
All right, all right. Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you for the honor.
This is, this is exciting. It really is. And by the way, did you know that we have an Eichner on the council? Right, right. Okay, one other thing, and then we'll do some pictures. I remember when we moved here in '84, Tranquility Island was just overgrown completely. I mean, nobody went over there or anything else. And I was in the home of one of our older members of this community, was also a historian, and there were a couple of others who'd been here forever. And when they heard there was a project to clear Tranquility Island and make it another part of Louis Hayes Park, they said, "Very idea. Flood will come, and everything will be washed away. That's a silly idea." But it looks like it's a pretty good idea.
One thing I forgot to mention, we have great cooperation from the Convention and Visiting Bureau and from the Chamber of Commerce. Where's Brad?
Brad's right there. And Julie?
Right here.
There you are.
So we, across the community, we've had great cooperation, so thanks a bunch of your support.
All right. Okay. I'm going to pass this to you, and we'll get some pictures as you hold that in front of you.
All right. We can do that. All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know where it is?
You know what it is, though? It's right past the Hill Country Arts Foundation on the lake.
All of you. This is super.
Bye, Charlie.
I should have noted that Bob and Diane Green were here, and their daughter is right here. Kim Clarkson.
I had to give him directions.
Yeah, good. All right. Our next item is Consent Agenda. Tonight, it is for the various minutes of city council and city council workshops. Do we have a motion on this matter?
Excuse me, Mayor. Looks like we skipped over the Visor Citizens Forum.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Visitors and Citizens Forum, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, sir. We have four. Mario Garcia.
Okay.
Test, test, test. Mayor Blackburn, city council members. I've been kind of fighting this for the last few meetings. Basically, I'm kind of wanting to go back to our old structure. I think what we need to do is, I think this sends a wrong message with the barriers and the city staff and everything, and it takes away probably 50%, maybe more than 50% of seating for the citizens. A lot of them out there, if you didn't notice, they were standing out there. In every meeting that I come to, there are more that are standing out there before they come in because there's not enough seating for them. Now, I know it's a temporary thing, and they're going to come in and go, that sort of thing. But I think what we need to do is just mingle it back up again like we had, because we always sat next to a staff member. We always sat next to, I remember a couple of times I sat next to Guillermo, and we had some good conversations. So if we can just kind of put it back the way it was. I know how we got it this way because of the pandemic and the six-foot difference between the desks, and it was probably all spread out through here, sort of thing. But I think if we go back to putting back what it, you know, what we really are is we're the citizens, top of the org chart, and mingle them with the staff. I think that would be, if we can get back to that. And I think this is kind of, you know, just saying, I'd like to sit next to the chief and maybe chief over there and have conversations with them. So without this, we can't. So that's my point. So if you can consider that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Peggy McKay. And I'm sorry, can you give your address, please?
934 Pecan.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester Kerrville. My concern is the budget is coming up, and as in the public, the only information we get are generic changes or additions to the budget, but we see nothing by department. We know nothing until the draft is presented to the public. I understand that won't be until July 20th, and I'm afraid that's going to bunch up all the questions, bunch up all the people asking for information at the very end. And rather than having that, if we could get it ahead of time, it would be very helpful. I assume y'all have a draft? You have a hard draft to work from, council? You don't have one? You don't have a draft either?
We have workshops and go over the information.
But you have no draft of the department request?
She said, she said no. No, the answer is no.
We do not. No, Mrs. McKay, we do not.
Okay. Well, we're going to have fun at the end of the budget.
Thank you, Mrs. McKay.
Martha Hicks.
Hello, I'm Martha Hicks. I live at 922 Cypress in Blue Bell Hills, and I'm here again about the bike parade. There's nothing particularly new about it, except it's all ready to go, and I want to stress it's a free activity, nothing on an iPad, get the kids off the electronics, bring them out, get them all dolled up in red, white, and blue or something. Get yourselves dolled up in red, white, and blue. Last time I was here, I said it was going to be at 9:30. It's going to kick off at 9:00 a.m., and a fire truck's going to lead the parade. And if anybody wants a flyer or anything, it's right here. I am, I thank you, Bonnie, for putting a nice article in the paper, and I'm going to send it out to other places and also put it on Facebook. Anyway, thank you, and it's going to be starting at the Trinity Baptist Church on July 3rd, Saturday, 9:00. Be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hicks.
Jerry Wolf.
I'm Jerry Wolf. I live at 509 North Buckboard. Good evening. I wanted to revisit something that was presented here a month ago, and that's the sidewalk and traffic modifications proposed for Highway 16 or the Sidney Baker Bridge. I'm surprised that over a month, over four weeks have transpassed, and the comments that have been made in the local newspaper about the most people that I've read so far are totally against it. And for the primary reason, it gets back to something very basic. If there is a problem there, you're trying to solve it by creating a problem. You say there's a problem with pedestrian traffic, pedestrian safety, yet you want to narrow lanes on that bridge, which is going to cause, I think that's just Texas common sense, it's going to result in more vehicular accidents on that bridge, which therefore endanger anyone who's walking across that bridge. So we got into a circular problem here. So it's not solved by narrowing the lanes on, on the bridge. That doesn't work. I think, Mr. Mayor, you brought up at the end of that discussion, probably the driving force behind this idea, and that being that downtown business districts want more pedestrian traffic of people on the other side of the river to be able to walk across and to come into downtown. Well, that's admirable, but the taxpayers of Kerrville are not here to fund the business interests of the downtown business owners. That's called crony capitalism. That doesn't work either. I think you should revisit this. I think it should be pulled out of that packet, if it's already been sent to Tech dot, asked for it to be returned, and I think there should be a major presentation here in council and during a council meeting to discuss this so people can come and express their views on the topic, which gets back to that last point I made in the last, in that meeting two, a month ago, was about transparency. This item was presented in somewhat, somewhat detail in a workshop that you had at 4:00 that day. When it came to the city council meeting, none of that detail was presented. There was strictly a contract for the, with the engineering company. That 4:00 meeting should not ever diminish the information that's presented at this meeting. This was people, this meeting is reserved for people to be able to, to know they can come at this time at 6:00 on two Mondays a month and hear everything they want to know about what's going on in Kerrville, or at least hopefully they get to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
City manager, can I make some clarifications? I won't, I won't answer you directly because that's not the way this forum works. But for clarification for everyone in this room, we have not approved any improvements to the Sidney Baker Bridge. What we have approved is a contract to go before Tech dot with multiple projects, and then if those projects are considered, then we, we look at the design elements. I think there's been some misinformation shared, in my personal opinion, that we've approved some sort of project that hasn't been approved. This is a multi-step, multi-layer project that involves a whole complete side of town, and if one element of the project doesn't prove out or doesn't make sense, it won't be done. So to say that we've approved something to happen is just, in my opinion, for clarification for if you're sitting in this room, not accurate. And to keep belaboring this point when it will come back to council, if in fact it's something that we even have an opportunity to look at in October, then that will be a great time for those discussions to be had. That's when the decisions will be made, not right now. So it will, if it, if it comes forward, it comes back in October. So this, this wasn't anything that was the end of a project line, and it was the very beginning, and it needs to be viewed that way. So I have listened to all of the comments and appreciate those comments, and if this project does get back in front of us, those comments will most certainly be reviewed. The conversations will continue to be had, and I don't know what else to say, but I just wanted to clarify that because I keep seeing comments, and I did not approve a project. I can, I approved the looking forward at an area of study that may or may not include elements of the project, which may or may not include a bridge. So I just wanted to clarify.
Point of order, Mayor. Also, for future references during the Visor Citizens Forum, as a point of order, when we respond, we should only be stating statements of fact as detailed in the Open Meetings Act and not opinions.
That's what I did. That's what I did.
And, excuse me, and not opinions.
That was all fact.
Yeah.
That was all fact. Can you tell me what was an opinion?
I can't deliberate on the subject.
No, okay, I would like for you to tell me. I would like, I would like a little bit of, I would like him to tell me what I said that was not factual.
I'll tell you what. We need, we will revisit the whole issue of citizen, you know, of any response to Citizens Forum and so forth, but let's move on to the consent agenda. Okay, consent agenda. 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, all minutes of various meetings. Any discussion on that? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, we've got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. Now we go to 5A, ordinances, and this is a second reading, and is there any further explanation needed of this, of this item?
Is there any, are there any changes or anything?
I'll read it in, and we do have one speaker.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2021-14, second reading. An ordinance annexing an approximate 149.519 and 2.775 acre tract of land, both located within the Comanche Trace residential development into the city of Kerrville, Texas, and extending the boundary limit to the city, so as to include such property within the city limits. Approving a service agreement for the annexed property and adopting the zoning for the annexed property as a medium-density residential district R2. And we do have one speaker.
All right.
Jerry Wolf.
Okay.
Jerry Wolf, 509 North Buckboard. I think the last time I spoke on this subject, the last meeting, was, did it have an open hearing? No?
I, I don't remember, actually.
Public hearing, first reading.
We did, we had a public.
Is there supposed to be a public hearing now?
Yeah, public hearing, yeah.
No, this is second reading.
Okay, all right. That's the confusion. My confusion. At the last meeting, when the subject came up, I inquired about the status of several conditions that were in the original development agreement between Comanche Trace Ranch and Golf and the city of Kerrville. The ones I, items I were questioning or asking for information about had to do with conditions that Comanche Trace would fulfill to the city of Kerrville, and that was the conveyance of ownership of three water wells that existed on this Comanche Trace property, which referred to in the document as Waterwell 1, Waterwell 2, and 3, and 50% of the senior water rights that the Comanche Trace owned to the Guadalupe River. Mr. Hayes or the city secretary was kind enough to forward me the latest development agreement, which was approved by you in February, which was what, Mr. Hayes, some 18 months? About 18 months after the agreement, the original agreement, which was, I asked for 20 years, terminated. So anyway, it took the city a while to finally, for y'all to get around to amending and updating that agreement. In this new agreement, Waterwell 1 and Waterwell 2, which were supposed to originally could be conveyed to Kerrville, will now no longer be conveyed. I do not know the status of Waterwell 3. I do not know why the 50% ownership to the senior rights of the Guadalupe River are not being conveyed to the city of Kerrville. One thing unique about that aspect of it is that Comanche Trace still had rights to use the water out of the Guadalupe River. Kerrville, city of Kerrville essentially did, was not going to be able to draw any water from it, but we do, we would own, the city would own 50% of the senior water rights, and I do not know what's happened to that. What is somewhat interesting, too, is that Waterwell 1, I was told that Waterwell 1 and Waterwell 2 were no longer operative and basically had been abandoned. But those two wells, by, as a matter of fact, were the two wells that supplied the Shelton Office Building slash home, I guess it was, which is now the Comanche Trace House. What happened to those wells? And do we have a documentation and verification document, hopefully signed by a professional engineer with his stamp, stating that those wells are no longer any good, there's no reason to acquire them, they have no value to the city? So before you approve this agreement tonight to annex part, a new part of Comanche Trace, this whole business, old business, should now be cleaned up and rectified once and for all. There was talk that city did not fulfill an agreement to deliver a certain amount of irrigation water, and that's the reason why the water rights and the wells were never conveyed. Is there a document that states this, that was written to the city by Comanche Trace? Again, has there been an engineering, an engineer, professional engineer stated that the water wells are no longer of value? All these kinds of things are still hanging there, and this is, this is, I don't know if it's your last shot, but it's close to your last shot of having some leverage on Comanche Trace to fulfill the original conditions of that, of the development agreement.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, would you like to respond?
Well, and I, I think I was more specific last time certainly than I will be now. I don't have the agreement in front of me, and I think it would be a disservice to, to me, for me to answer all those questions that Mr. Wolf has. I will say this, that agreement has no basis upon the action before you. This is a zoning matter on second reading. The council wants us to delve into any of those questions that Mr. Wolf has raised. We're happy to do that, but I'm not prepared to answer it in a meeting.
But you're saying the motion in front of us does not relate to, well, 1, 2, and 3?
This is land use. This is, you know, a zoning issue for, an annexation issue for, for a tract of land that pursuant to the development agreement, they, they've agreed to bring into the city periodically, and that's what's before you. I don't, it doesn't have any relevance to the development agreement, other than the development agreement certainly addresses how this process works outside of state law.
Yeah. Mr. Hyde, would you like to respond?
Trevor Hyde, 2801 Comanche Trace Drive. So 20 years later, one thing that Mr. Wolf was saying, there were extensions put in place, so it wasn't like we just left it for 18 months on a development agreement. Working with council, two of the wells, city staff said inoperable, not good. It's not the well that serves the clubhouse. The well that serves clubhouse is part of the annexation that goes in. The city's actually serving the water to the clubhouse. The clubhouse is part... The council wants us to delve into any of those questions that Mr. Wolf has raised. We're happy to do that, but I'm not prepared to answer it in a meeting.
But you're saying the motion in front of us does not relate to, well, one, two, and three?
This is land use. This is, you know, a zoning issue for, and an annexation issue for, for a tract of land that pursuant to the development agreement, they, they've agreed to bring into the city periodically, and, and that's what's before you. I don't, it doesn't have any relevance to the development agreement, other than the development agreement certainly addresses how this process works outside of state law.
Yeah. Mr. Hyde, would you like to respond?
Trevor Hyde, 2801 Comanche Trace Drive. So 20 years later, one thing that Mr. Wolf was saying, there were extensions put in place, so it wasn't like we just left it for 18 months on a development agreement. Working with council, two of the wells, city staff said inoperable, not good. It's not the well that serves the clubhouse. The well that serves clubhouse is part of the annexation that goes in. The city's actually serving the water to the clubhouse. The clubhouse is part of the new tax base that's going in with 150 acres. Let's see, the Kemmer family's been here 20 years, only development company that's never gone bankrupt. The city had a problem with all site water, which is outside of our development agreement. The Kemmer family came in, offered up a couple hundred thousand dollars to help on servicing the community. It's, I think, a little over $300 million tax base currently. Going to be about $700 million to a billion when completed. And I think when people step up and make a lot of generalities on comments that aren't factual in trying to understand the facts, Mr. Wolf hasn't reached out to me. I don't know how much detail with the city, but we've worked hard with council, we've worked hard with city staff, we have a good professional relationship. We just completed a new 20-year agreement, and we're going to continue developing per our development agreement.
All right.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move ahead and approve ordinance number 2012 dash 14 on the second reading.
2021.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. 2021.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we've got a second here. Any further discussion?
Well, before we move forward to the vote, I would just like to, I would appreciate if there were any questions that Mr. Wolf asked that have not got answered, that we can get those answered. And I'd appreciate it to be copied onto that, because I understand we don't have the contracts in, in front of you. I have mine right here, my copies. But I'd like to get those answers as well. And I'd also just like to, to note that when we do have these agreements with whoever the party is, regardless, council and when the city, we have a duty to make sure that the city is protected and that those agreements do get followed through. And so I'm not putting blame on anybody, but just making that note, that council should in the future always make sure, if we haven't, that these agreements do get followed through. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have a very good record on that, but obviously it needs to be, needs to be paid attention to. Okay, all in favor of this motion? If you let it be known by your upraised hand, and it carries unanimously. All right, five B, if you would read that in for us, Ms. McElhanan.
Ordinance number 2021 dash 15, second reading. An ordinance limiting Chapter 60 Code of Ordinances to the city of Kerrville, Texas. Chapter 60 more commonly known as the City's zoning code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 6014100, consisting of Lot 2R, Block 1, of the Freeman Fritz addition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a public and institutional zoning district, PI, to a residential mixed zoning district, RM, providing a cumulative clause, providing for separability, providing an effective date in ordering publication. And there are no citizen speakers find out.
All right. This is a second reading. I don't think it requires another explanation. We talked about it last time. This was where the service dogs for veterans, operation wise, and this will be, as was indicated, a mixed zoning district for residences in that area.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021 dash 15 on second reading. I'll second that.
All right. Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor with the upraised hand? All right, there you go. It passes unanimously. Okay, consider, consideration, possible action. Is, is Chief Holt here?
Chief Holt is not here. Based off of workshop feedback, he went ahead and headed home to deal with some family issues.
I'm sorry. Tell me again.
Chief Holt is not here. Based off of workshop feedback, he did go ahead and head home, but we're happy to present to the city council information that we heard in a workshop earlier.
Okay, you want to go ahead and present it?
Sure.
Okay. And who will do that?
I can provide you just a brief summary.
Okay.
You know, as we recall from the workshop, the Centerpoint Volunteer Fire Department is spearheaded by Chief Holt, who is looking to create within that area an emergency service district that would provide fire service, not EMS, because that is currently covered by Kerrville through our interlocal agreement with Kerr County. However, they are looking at creating essentially an overlapping taxing jurisdiction within that specified boundary that they would be putting a force to the voters located within the, the residential voters located within that area on the November ballot. To do that, because that boundary overlaps with the city's ETJ, they essentially have to seek permission from this body. And within 60 days of receiving that petition, the, the council has to provide them direction on that. Based off of the council feedback that was generally provided earlier in discussion with Chief Holt, city staff will be working with Chief Holt in amending the survey boundary that had been provided, that, that does overlap within that ETJ area, and that will be brought back to the council likely at the July 13 city council meeting. If you have to answer any questions you may have.
All right.
And I think it's just important that everyone understand it doesn't change our fire protection, our EMS protection, any of that, in any way.
Right.
And we've got a great cooperative partnership with the Centerpoint Volunteer Fire Department, and we certainly want to continue that going forward.
Exactly.
In whatever iteration that that community decides to, to create themselves.
Okay.
We do have one citizen speaker find out.
All right.
Sandra Garcia.
Okay.
Okay, yes, okay.
Senator, I take Sandra's.
I give you my time too.
We not do that.
Uh, no, no. Were you signed up for this item?
No, she was yielding her time.
Yeah, no. Okay. The, all right. Now, let me ask you this. Do we advance this item further with a vote? Just no action? Okay. All right. And no action on, on the next resolution, because we dealt with it in workshop?
No, sir. Six B, would you have a presentation for you? Six A, there's no action. Six B, are you talking about resolution number 29, 2021?
Yeah, 2921.
Yes, sir. We do have a presentation for you on that item.
All right. Okay.
So we would like to, go ahead and read it in.
Resolution number 29 dash 2021, a resolution authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation to finance land and improvements for certain municipal facilities, including public safety and judicial facilities. And there are five citizen find out.
Okay.
So I'd like to just provide a brief summary of the city council on the item that's before you tonight, what, what is and what isn't before you tonight, and then introduce our financial advisor to provide further background to you. This item essentially is prescribed within state law, and what it is asking the council to do is to initiate a conversation. We, this community, for a number of years, in fact, seven years, has had a public safety facility on the books within its community improvement program, and that has been contemplated to be debt financed. There has no, not been cash funding that has been moving towards that effort over those seven years. In fact, you, as you may recall, in the fiscal year 2015 budget, there were funds allocated for feasibility analysis to begin to look at what the cost may be for a public, a public safety complex to possibly include new facilities for our police services, new facilities for our fire administration, and new facilities for our municipal court. Fast forwarding a year, fiscal year 16, that was, some preliminary estimates of what those costs may be were included, starting back then with identified funding sources, looking at certificates of obligation, debt, debt fund, funding. And so now, fast forward five or six years, and which was actually prescribed within that 10-year capital plan, and we are looking at the time that that, that debt is needing to, we're needing to have a conversation about if we're going to proceed with that and if we are going to look at a, a new public safety facility. So with that, again, this is not, tonight, the action is not to authorize that debt, it is simply to authorize that conversation to begin and to publish notice in a transparent fashion prescribed by state law to begin to have that conversation with the community. So with that, I'd like to introduce our financial advisor, Ann Berger-Entrekin, who's been our finance advisor for many years, and we're so excited to have her here today.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council members, as introduced, my name is Ann Berger-Entrekin, and I am with Hilltop Securities, and I serve the city of Kerrville as your financial advisor. We understand as you're getting ready to embark on this process, we feel like it's important to give a market overview. And so that's what I'm here to talk about this evening, although it is a little bit interesting, if I may ask you to turn to the bond buyers index two slides over, please. Thank you. This is the chart that I often show you when I am before you, and I believe that this is a great indication of what's going on on the market. If you look at the chart, you can see that this is the bond buyers index. It comes out every Thursday, and it's an aggregation of interest rates, looking at a collective group of random, or not random, but defined borrowers and understanding what their costs would be. So it's not the cost that Kerrville would get, but it helps you to understand what market trends have been. This particular chart goes back 25 years, and you can see, 25 years ago, we had 6% rates. And if you look on the far right-hand side, you can see we're at a 207. As I mentioned, this is an economic indicator that comes out every Thursday. I will have to tell you that I was in the market pricing bonds today, and when the number comes out Thursday, it will be higher. We don't know what the number will be, but to put in perspective, if you look, the number from the week before was a 207. If you go back and you look at the, at the next lowest point on the curve, it was a 202. And if we were to extend this chart all the way back to early 1961, when it began, that was the lowest interest rate that they had in the entire time. So although the expectations are that interest rates are going to go up, and what this really is a function of was the FOMC meeting last week, the Federal Open Market Committee, and the Fed Chairman did signal that they may be raising interest rates sooner than they had projected, and that there may be tapering. I think it's very important to put in perspective that even if interest rates do go up, you are still at a point in time where 90 or 95% of the history of when this index has been in place, interest rates have been higher than they are now. And you can see, if I may ask you to please go to the next page, this is the same chart, but it only goes back over a period of a year. So you can see about a year ago, we were 2.5%, and you can see the volatility that has occurred. And so again, even on the right-hand side, if, if interest rates go up 10 or 15 basis points, we're, we're still lower than we were a year ago. And again, from a historical perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. On the next page, this is the municipal market data yield curve. And when bonds are priced, we look to the MMD as the benchmark for doing so. And what this shows is a yield curve over a period of time for AAA, double A, single A, and B double A. And what we think is very important is, in this historically low interest rate environment, we still see significant yield compression. So the trading differential between a AAA and a double A is very narrow. And again, I think that that just shows where we are from a historically low interest rate perspective. And then, if I may ask you to please go two more pages. As the city manager said, this is the initiation of a process. There is no formal action relative to the issuance of debt that the city council will be considering this evening. We thought it would be important to walk through the key dates that would be for your consideration. So we show tonight the regular meeting where you will have the opportunity to consider the resolution authorizing a notice of intent to issue. The state law process does require that there are two publications, once a week, for two consecutive weeks, in the newspaper of general circulation. We protect those for June 29 and for July 6. We will continue to move forward with the process so that should the council decide to take action, all the necessary steps will be put into place. That would include reaching out to Standard and Poor Corporation. With new issuance of debt, the city's rating will be reviewed again, and so we have that on here and when the rating would be received. One of the things that we have, and you can see that there are a couple of brackets, at this point in time, we do not have a recommendation, if the city decides to proceed with this yet, about a competitive sale or a negotiated sale. Last week, I think we would have absolutely said a competitive sale, but with the market uncertainty and a little bit weaker tone this week, we would like to reserve that judgment. We believe that that's a more appropriate call as you go through the process and through the determination if it is decided that you move forward with the issuance of certificates of obligation. Sometimes what we see, like after the FOMC meets, it takes the market a little bit of time to digest that information, and so we could very well be in a situation where in a week or two, the markets have calmed down. So again, that's more kind of a game day decision.
Is that, are you talking about parameter sale? Is that, no, this is different?
No, ma'am. Because this is a new money bond issuance.
Okay.
What we would need to do is, that would actually be, if you decide to move forward, we would issue the bonds. We would go out, we would get a bid from an underwriter, whether it's a competitive sale or a negotiated sale, and then we would bring that to the city council, and the council would make the determination at that time whether to award the sale or not.
Thank you.
At this point in time, and given the necessary dates for the steps in the process, we would propose that that would be on or about August 24. And to the extent that you decide to issue the bonds at that time, the closing would be still for September 16. And so with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And you might also want to speak to the city's current bond rating. I know, as you mentioned before, obviously, we were going through a rerating process, but you may want to speak to essentially the city's credit worthiness as it stands right now.
Yes, sir. So the city is rated a double A by Standard and Poor's staple outlook. The highest rating you can have is a AAA. There's one notch in between those, a double A plus. In this environment, anything in the double A and the AAA category are what we consider high-grade credits. And one of the things I think that you, for those of you who have been available for prior bond sales, you have seen that the city of Kerrville trades very well in the market. The, the name and the reputation that the city has is such that you have been able to price very aggressively in the market. When we've had competitive bond sales, we've had multiple bids that have been coming in. And so it's just, you've got a strong double A rating. You also have a very positive name in the market.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council? All right. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bill Morgan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, this is Bill Morgan, 1744 Glen Road. I'm concerned because of the fact that this statement paper today on the agenda says this is a proposal for certificates of obligation. I, for one, I've been here 25 years. I don't recall being, having the right or privilege to vote on a bond issue for any entity in this county, except school board. They do put out a bond, and the citizens get to vote. I think the citizens would need to and deserve the right to vote on this issue, not be done with a certificate of obligation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this matter?
Can you have additional?
I'm sorry?
We have additional.
Okay.
934 Pecan Street. I object to this. I'm not alone. I think everybody here knows I grew up here. So I know a lot of former mayors and council members, and I've actually started reaching out and talking to them, even when I was running for council, I actually did that, too. And I think whoever brought this up, I mean, it just seems to me it's not physically conservative. I mean, putting the debt, and there's some quotes from these individuals that I'll tell at the end, which I think is kind of telling. I think the mindset we got to realize that when we're up here in council is that, and I've heard it, when you come up here, I've been elected, so I'm going to do what I want to do. And then the other thing is, is that you've been elected, you need to continue that, as much as you were stomping on the ground, asking for the votes, you need to continue to listen to your constituents and what they have to say. And I'll share more in a minute of what, of what I'm hearing out there, as well as myself, too. I think predominantly here in the community, we're conservatives. I, one of the former mayors was beautiful in saying that we didn't do anything way back when, when, unless we had the money for it. He says, it sure isn't that way now. Everybody just wants to spend. With our current building, it's obviously needs repair. I've understood that. I've... I've spoken to the previous chief, we were talking, and he mentioned that there was some repairs roughly on the roof and some AC work that was needed. Why isn't that put into the budget? And if it's become so bad within the building, why now do we want to have to build a new building when we have a perfectly standing structure there for our force there, so our police force? And I just think that, one, is it a problem of not allocating enough resources to the building to repair it? Or now, like some people do, they got a bad tire, so let's just buy a new car, kind of a thing? The history of COs, I've mentioned this, too. COs were only designed and made for taking advantage of bond rates and emergencies. And you can go on, I found several articles on the county's website, where they're concerned because that is the fundamental use of finding money or getting into debt for cities, is to just raise a hand and let's put the citizens in debt, and that COs were not designed for that. Look it up. And then I'll get into some of the comments. One of them mentioned, we were talking about the CO, and one of them said, of course, they'd choose a CO. They know their constituents would not approve. And then one of them, what he said, which I really admire this gentleman, he said, yeah, they're building monuments on the backs of taxpayers. This is a lot of money, and I don't think we need to burden the citizens. And as far as what I heard here, please forgive me, ma'am, okay? What I heard here was that car salesman thing, like, you're not going to get the better deal now. Let's do the deal right now. We got to sign it right now. You can't go, if you go and come back, everything's going to change, that kind of a thing. No, I don't believe in that. I'm the kind of a Dave Ramsey kind of a guy. We need to save our money, build it to what we want to do. Then when we have it, if it takes us two, three, four, five years, then do it. And as far as what's the condition we're in now, yeah, it's that low. We just got out of a pandemic. Snowstorm for us as well, so I really think you need to consider what the gentleman said, quit building monuments on the back of taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay?
I realize that this only authorizes publication to go out for intent to issue debt. However, included in the detail is the date that you're coming back with the proposition that you will issue it, and that is in August. Not a specific date in August, but the detail says in August. In Exhibit A, the resolution states this will finance all or portion of debt with proceeds from one or more series of the certificates of obligation. I'm assuming these aren't the two that were retired and morphed into a 2019 series. And also, the $7 million will be used, either all or portion of it, to acquire land improvements, if any, construct, equip, renovate improvements that might be on site. Paying with COs will be done by levying an ad valorem tax plus a lien and a pledge on surplus revenue, if any, from water and sewer system. And my question to that is, my understanding is that water and sewer revenues stayed in the water and sewer fund. They did not go out to the general fund. Now, maybe if you transfer money into the general fund, you can say it's coming from the general fund, but the originator would have been the water sewer revenues. Let's see. Our water and sewer rates have been raised two of the last three years and will be raised again this year. Part of that, I suspect, I'm not sure, but I'm questioning whether this came from the street use fee, which is somewhere between $300 and a half a million a year. And if you take that out of the water and sewer fund and raise rates, you're just taking it out of one pocket to put in another. And I just think it's not a good use of the water sewer fund, which is another subject for the budget. The taxpayers should have the opportunity to evaluate potential projects and vote whether or not to issue new debt to pay for them. COs prevent this. We have not had the opportunity to partner in decisions for new debt for many years, I understand, since the 80s. The intent of the CO was for emergencies, not for business as usual. And also, someone mentioned that the state is looking at the municipalities using COs for other-than-intended-use emergencies. This started in 2016, when cities started using COs to pass whatever project they had in mind and bypass the taxpayer. We want to be a part of the decision-maker making, and we're willing to do the work and the research to be well-informed.
Thank you.
George Burdi?
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So a couple of things everybody's already said, you know, the history of COs, they were designed just to be for emergencies. As far as what we do here, though, and actually, I will tell you this, when I first got on council, the then-new city manager, Mr. McDaniel, informed us that we were using COs too much in Kerrville, and his intention on this particular project was to make it a general obligation bond. To see it morph into a CO is a little disappointing, but also, people keep saying that this is not approving the actual bond issue. Of course, that's correct, but this isn't just something we're doing. This is the first required step to issue that. So it's almost like building the foundation. You haven't built the house, you haven't committed to building the house, but you have to build the foundation first. So this is the first, this is someone kicking the ball, starting it down the hill, and good luck stopping it. The other is, in this area, Kerr County, the city of Kerrville, maybe they're the only ones that's allowed to, I don't know, but we're the only one that actually, only tax entity that does use COs. KISD did use it for the school. Kerr County used it for the jail. Currently, Ms. Hughes is sitting on a CIP committee for the county. They're looking at doing a bond issue, but they're going to go to the voters. The plus to going to the voters isn't just that we get to decide on the debt amount, it's that it forces the actual project to be discussed in detail in front of the public whether they really want it. This is a project that I think everybody would agree, to some extent, varying degrees, is a necessary project, but it's not an emergency. We've admitted that it's been on our CIP for six, seven years. Why haven't we been setting it aside? Because we chose not to prioritize it. Well, that's not a reason to use a CO. That's a reason to come to us, us, the citizens, and explain why you haven't prioritized it. Why hasn't it been a set aside each year for this maintenance? So I would argue, well, I wouldn't argue, I just suggest that you look into that. The other thing is, in the most recent election, the voters did speak about this particular issue. It was a campaign issue that distinguished between the only contested race we had. The winner actually was standing on the ground that we should be taking debt to the voters almost exclusively. The one who didn't get elected was saying COs are okay. And in fact, she said something to the effect of, if the voters didn't really agree with that, then they would be voting out the city council people. Well, they voted in, the city council person suggesting that we don't want these COs. So you might, that's some, there's some obvious feedback that's coming from the voters that you at least ought to address. Whether you're going to follow their lead is up to you, I guess, but you ought to at least address that when you're making this decision. And I think that's probably, yeah, that's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Garcia?
934 Pecan Street. I think most of the comments have already been said, but I want to reiterate, 1986 was the last time you all let the citizens be heard, whether or not we wanted to go into debt. 1986, that's a long time. You were voted in by the people to serve the people, not to serve your own opinion, your own wants, but to listen to the majority. Tonight, there are five of us asking not to move forward with this. If it were an emergency, that's one thing. If that building collapsed, absolutely, let's do it, because they need a place to be housed. But when we hear since 2015, this has been an issue, a topic, then it should have been in the budget for six years. We should have been saving to build a building or to renovate a building. Now you're coming to us. This isn't the start of a discussion. It's pretty much already in place when we know it's $7 million that you're asking for. Things are already in place. So I think you're lying to us by saying we're just starting a discussion. We're not just starting a discussion, we're starting to move, like George said, the ball's going downhill. So I ask that you truly consider what the citizens who voted you in are asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen's.
All right. Any further discussion on council?
Mayor, I would like to add to the public comment. Yeah, I, as I'm sure everybody knows, one of my big things is I'm a strong advocate for community involvement and for the community to be aware of the city's business. So I reached out to some of my constituents, and here are quotes from what they said, and I want to add this onto the public comments, this was right after. These are their quotes. And so it continues, "We already have a debt of $66 million. If people are expected to live within their means, then our government should do the same. No more debt. No to a public safety complex. Our property taxes are already totally out of control. The city has to stop unnecessary spending and tighten their belt. If 2020 taught us anything, it's not to live beyond your means. Just because council members have the power doesn't mean they need to push things like this. This is not Austin. Stop spending our money like this. Why is it needed? I hear the police department complex is rundown and not in great shape. A new public safety complex might be a great idea. Put it on the ballot. Let us vote. Wondering if the money could be saved and this could be built when the city has the money, rather than incurring such a huge amount of debt? The taxpayers have not been able to vote on new debt, I believe, since 1985. Out of control. Are the existing buildings unsafe? Can they be refurbished and modernized without replacing them? How old are the existing buildings? Inquiring minds would like to know. I think the citizens should vote on such a large expenditure. Can the current buildings be upgraded? I'm all for public safety, but I don't think there need, but I do think there needs to be a vote by the citizens. What can the tax windfall, what about the tax windfall that the city's going to receive? Where will it be used? And those are just some of the 13 comments that I wrote down, and there are several more.
Yeah, there's one here that says, "I hear the police department complex is rundown and not in great shape. A new public safety complex is a great idea."
I just read that one, yeah. Yeah, I read that. And so I appreciate those who got involved, provided their feedback. And from those comments, it's clear that some taxpayers are concerned about the city using their money to incur more debt. And I'd also like to add, in our workshop last week, our former finance director informed us that we have the capacity to issue $6.5 million in debt. And yet, this proposal is more than that. Now, I'm all for public safety. I want them to know that, and I want the city to know that. However, I take the issuing of debt just as serious as any other issue that I would consider, and it needs to be considered carefully. You know, it's true, when, and I believe that when the citizens are saying that this is not just the start of a conversation, I don't really think it is. You know, in our workshop, we just ended executive session, voting to authorize staff to move forward and already look at this public safety building. We haven't even decided on this yet, though. We've, I really, I have a lot of questions, I have some questions for staff that I would like to ask, but those are the concerns. Clearly, the citizens are not as informed as, you know, they probably want to be, or maybe they are, and maybe they're telling us not to do this. And it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. You know, we haven't done this, we don't have an analysis from staff. We're announcing this potential debt before council has had even the opportunity to review the final numbers and even vote on our budget for the next year? And like was stated in the visitor's citizens forum, we don't have a copy of that budget. We don't even have a copy of that. We weren't given it, and so we don't know what the numbers are. And I think we're jumping way ahead. We're way ahead. And I would like to know what it would take to put this up for a bond election. I mean, it was stated by staff that it was shown that this would be used by certificates of obligations. Where did it state that? Because I'm really curious, because I couldn't find that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
What, where did it state, or where does it indicated that the funding for this facility should be specifically for COs?
It was in the budgets approved in fiscal year 17, fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, and fiscal year 21.
Okay.
Within the capital improvement program.
Right. And I appreciate you telling that, because I just want that on the record. And looking at the comprehensive plan, the study that was done, impact and the feedback from the community, they wanted this, and it's to consider bond funding for this complex. But that doesn't specify whether it's going to be a CO or whether it's going to be a bond election. And so a lot needs to happen beforehand.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah. Ms. Garcia, in regard to quoting people saying that we're out of control in regard to property taxes, do you know how long it's been since this or previous councils have raised the property tax rate?
I'm just reading their quotes, mayor. I'm not standing, oh, yes, I know. The last two years, the tax rates were lowered. However, appraisal rates did go up, you know, it doesn't exactly equate out.
How long has it been since we've raised the property tax rates?
Mayor, I think I just answered your question, but I do.
No, you didn't. Am I right? It's 12 years now?
The property tax rate's been raised?
Yeah, okay.
We don't do appraisal values. That's the appraisal decision.
But we can control the property tax.
Okay. You know, in regard to, in regard to what you shared and what you stated, this is the beginning of a process. It's not the end, it's beginning. And the end is not determined. But I know that your mother just said, we're all liars, and your father said, people get on the council and say, I do what I want to do. Well, that's really not the case. And some of this has really been pretty insulting, but councilwoman?
Yeah, I was just going to, I had some of my own comments, and just to reiterate, you know, public safety has been on the capital improvement projects planned since 2016. We are a conservative community. How do we pay for capital projects, things that are outside of the daily operations of the city? We've got two mechanisms. We pay for those either by raising your property taxes or by issuances of debt. Council, in order to, if you would please, you're not at the microphone, if you would please allow me the respect that I deserve by when it's my turn to speak?
They can make comments.
No, they can't. Not in a business meeting. No, they can't. I know it's your parents, but they can't make comments right now while I'm speaking.
Okay, Ms. Garcia, go ahead.
So we fund them by raising your taxes, so you pay for them every year through your property taxes, or we fund them by issuing debt and spreading it out over time? This is not a Band-Aid. The public safety complex is failing. This is not a need, I'm sorry, this is not a want, this is a need. If this was something that we wanted to do but was not a critical need, then I agree that this should be put out for a bond election. But this has been planned, it's been transparent, it's been in the budget as a capital improvement project, and when we wanted to help the citizens, we have not reserved that money in property taxes, and this was always the mechanism, since the time I've been on council, it's been talked about, since the time before I was on council, it was talked about. Our councils before us put some parameters in place about debt, how much debt we can obligate ourselves to. They set ourselves to. They set up a parameter that we are living within. We have debt rolling off, and this is the first opportunity we've had to do what's on this. So to say that we haven't been planning, we have been planning. This is the time. It's always been the time. It's been planned to be the time. I totally support our public first responders and emergency services. And for me to sit here and not do what I think our community needs, not once, but needs, a failing structure with asbestos, with water running down the walls, a rented facility for our admin on the other side of town, a facility for our municipal court that was never intended to be a permanent facility, I think I would be doing a disservice to our community, to the people who elected me, and to our first responders if I didn't take some action now because of what I've seen and what I've experienced and the conversations I've had with people who work at the police department, the fire department, with citizens. And so I listened to all of these things and all of the, but it just sounds like, "Don't raise our taxes, but give us this, but don't do this, but do this." We can't do it all. We have, we have to make tough decisions. That's what we have to do. And that's, you know, I want to, I want to feel safe, and I want to feel that the people that are protecting me have the tools and the facilities that they need to do the critical jobs that make our city a safe and healthy place to live. So that's mine.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just a couple of words that I would like to say. I do take offense when someone says that those on council do what they want. There's not one person on this council who is here because they're doing what they want. They are doing what is best for Kerrville, and it bothers me when we are accused of other than that. Those of you who maybe have not had a tour, do not know what that building is like, you need to take a tour. You need to understand what they deal with. They do need new facilities. There's no question about that. This council has been responsible for debt, for, with COs. We have a double A bond rating. That does not say that it's somebody that just doesn't care about what they're obligating themselves to. So we're going into it with our eyes wide open. We know what we're doing, and in the past, it has been responsible. There's, we, there's no reason for us to be criticized for the decisions that we've made. So I will vote for this. I think it's, all this is doing at this point in time is just starting a conversation about that, taking a look at it. And that's what we need to do.
And I'd just like to finish up by saying, I'm not an advocate of certificates of obligation, and I do believe in separating our wants from our needs. I have toured those emergency, or the KPD facility, and it is an emergency, and that's what COs are for. And if you don't believe me, go tour that building, and I will vote for it.
Mayor, I have a motion to make.
All right.
I move to deny this item and instruct staff to return to council with appropriate documents and information to put this bond on a ballot to be voted by the citizens at the earliest election. This will give our bosses, the voters, the opportunity and the information that they deserve, give them the opportunity to be educated and express their own thoughts and voice on this item. We owe them at least that much.
All right. Is there a second? Okay, the motion dials for lack of a second.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Resolution Number 29-2021 as presented, which is to authorize the publication of notice of intent.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and all opposed by the same sign, and it carries four to one. We have items for future agendas. Okay. We have no need at this point for executive session? Sorry?
We have six C.
I'm six C.
I'm six C.
Six C. Oh, I'm sorry, the declaration of local state disaster. Who's going to respond to that?
I can briefly, Mayor. We, no new change from last month. As you may have seen, Governor Abbott did extend the disaster declaration statewide. Staff would not be recommending any change at this time. We continue to be in the same situation that we were in last month.
Okay. All right. Okay. If there's no, no other items, no executive session, we are adjourned at 7:15.